Good evening. I want to welcome you all to the Douglas Field Police Department campus, your campus. I'm glad to see so many people out concerned about this subject matter. It's not the first one that we have had dealing with active shooter. And usually when we do one with active shooter, we get a large crowd like this. This wasn't planned because of the recent events. We always around this time of the year, present a class of this type because we know that our citizens is going to be going out shopping, large crowds. And part of my job is not only to train our officers, but my job is also to train the public. If I train you all to be watchful, prepare plans, to see something, say something, be involved in your community, that in turn has helped me bring, and our department brings down the crime. Now, I say this, that when we have these town hall meetings, and we talk about, let's say, entering autos, forgeries, credit card fraud, we never get a crowd like this. Y'all hear me? So, really look at our Facebook page because we do four town hall meetings a year, four or five a year, on different subject matters. This one, the active shooter one, comes up around at the end of the year. And in the back, back there, we have information on holiday safety tips. So be sure you grab one of those as you leave out because again, the better we prepare you, the better we keep our city safe from crime. Now, as we get started with this active shooter, I want to, there's some young people in here and there may be some words in there that they may not hear at the house, or they may hear it at the house. But I'm just letting you know. And some of you all that don't hear those type of, that type of language, some, some language is in here. So I'm just pre-warning you. Now, our active shooter class is a little different than some others because we're going to talk a little bit about run, hide, fight. That fight. When you hiding and the person that's doing this terrible act is to come invade your hiding area, it's time to fight like it's for your life with anything you got because you may be saving your life. So the mindset, we're going to talk about the mindset. Just because they got an automatic weapon don't mean you're going to lose because they got an automatic weapon. Because if two or three of you gathered together and you formulate a plan and you're in a hiding spot, formulate the plan, and if they invade that area, you got to go for it. That's what we, that's, that's what we say. That's how we change the atmosphere to that guy or whoever it is coming in, we change the atmosphere. And other than just lying down in a corner and pleading with this person because this person is doing some things, he's not coming in to plead with you. Right? So you got to put on that alliance mentality. Since we're in the bulldog country, you got to put on the junkyard dog mindset. Mindset. That's what we got to do. But we figured out tonight, we're going to have two breads. First Brad Lottlemilk is going to come, Lieutenant Lottlemilk is going to come up. He's over our traffic division. And I'd like to say before he gets started, okay, holiday season's coming up, Douglas Field still have two lane roads. So when you go into the mall, the traffic going to be bad. So if you call 911, ask the chief to do something with this traffic, just think about it. There's nowhere to put it. We pay thousands and thousands of dollars to engineer, to engineer these lights so they act in accordance together. Right? So if we go out there and start moving traffic, you requesting the officer to move, not saying y'all, but some, you know, some other people. Move the traffic, what we're going to do is override what this guy's doing back looking at his computer to try to get the traffic moving. So prepare yourself with water, a nice listening music, a friend that you could talk to because just think about it. Rose Avenue, then this two lane road, and I'm from Douglas, I'm from here, I didn't come here, I'm from Douglas County. That's been a two lane road ever since I can remember. Now you got a major thoroughfare and where it's going to go. So I'm just telling you, so when you out there, like what's Sparks said, you know, I won't be out the traffic, I won't be. But anyway, just have patience, patience, yes sir.
What does the average response time?
Our res-
For 911 calls?
Depends on where it is. I think our response time was, depending on 45 seconds to a minute or so, you know, two minutes, it could be, it all depends on what the circumstance is. Arm robbery getting there, it's a burglary, or enter and out, it all depends on what the situation is. But we have a really fast response time because we don't have to cover as much coverage as the county does, you know. So we have officers in these zones and we have them in certain districts. So we have pretty good response time. But anyway, we're going to start out with Brad Lottlemilk. And Brad, we figure we'll go this way. We'll go from what Brad Lottlemilk was in the shooting at the Las Vegas. He was there. And Brad is a member of SWAT team, so he going to talk about his experience in that incident, which that's an outdoor incident. Now you got to remember outdoor, indoor incident, and he's going to talk a little bit about that. Then we're going to get into the nuts and bolts of why we here and talk about active shooter. Sheriff just came in, so sheriff, don't sit down before you sit down, I know there's a lot to get back up. I want you to say a few words yourself before we get started. So after Lieutenant Lottlemilk, we're going to have Captain Brad Stafford, who's over our training division. Remember this point what I'm trying to drive home to you. We have four training sessions a year for our citizens, not only just citizens, but our business community. And we had a town hall meeting for the business community that dealt with credit card fraud, all thefts, all kinds of flimsams that's going on in the businesses. And all the businesses you see in Douglas Field, how many you think showed up? Zero. So we're talking about concern, y'all. So if you're not concerned, and then when something go down, and then you say, what the police doing? Well, we've been doing this stuff all year long. So come and say, enter and out, let me tell you, one of the biggest crimes going out here, people going and breaking into your car. But when we have a class to tell you what to look for, nobody come. But then everybody calling the councilmen and everybody, the mayor, how come we can't stop this? Because we come in here, we try to train you, give you tips, what to look for. We can't be, we can't be everywhere at the same time. That's reason why all eyes got to work together for the good for everybody. If you in your community, you're out walking dogs, you see something that's suspicious, call 911. Don't get engaged, just call 911, and we going to be rolling that way. They going to take us long. They keep an eye, get a tag number, get a, you know, and they coming at night, around about 2 o'clock, you know, or 2 or 3 o'clock in the morning. And you know, when you get home, we're just talking about enter and autos right now. When you get home, after a hard day of work, you feeling, you feeling really, you know, you're tired of your boss, or are you the boss, you tired of dealing with people on the job, you just pull up at the house and I'm at home, I'm at my safe haven. So you leave your gun, your computer, your credit card, all in the car, and you go in the house, have your dinner and everything, go to sleep. Well, these people come through about 2 or 3 in the morning, that's all they do, they just rolling dice. Let me just check the door. That's locked, I go to the next house. Oh, open. Oh, gun, then go. Before you know it, then we get about 30 enter and autos. But if somebody, you get up at night, you get a drink of water, just look out the window. Oh, something, what? I see it's over there. You may see something. Dog barking? Ah, shit. Take a little peek out. Don't go out, just take a peek out. Put some eyes out there. That's what we want, your eyes, we want the information. We'll roll with, and we'll do the follow-up. But anyway, sheriff here, sheriff and I grew, just to show, just to say this right quick, and we'll get on with the program. I know you all didn't just come to hear me, but you got to hear me, I'm the chief. But to show you how you good you have it in Douglas County, the sheriff and I grew up together. You know, and a lot of agencies, a lot of counties, you know, has some dissension between the, maybe between the police department, sheriff department, and all these agencies fighting for power or whatever it is, we don't have no power struggle. Because we're, we're from here, we grew up together, riding bicycles and all kinds of things together. And so I think, you know, we have a great cohesive law enforcement unit here. And some things y'all need to think about to help us out too now. You know, it's not one of the, hey, you get what you pay for. You got a good group of officers here. You don't want your officers to be, your department to be a training ground for some other department. We train hard. We have a great training division, they do too. And guess who know we have good training officers? The Kep, Grenet, Marta, all these other agencies. So we get somebody and we train them up for two or three years, we still giving them kibbles and bits. And they just, and you can talk about, well, they ain't in it for the money, no, they ain't in it to go broke either. So I just, you know, I put my foot in my mouth every now and then, I get to it in a little bit, so, you know. I have to say what I feel is right for my men, that's why I'm the chief, and I stand in those shoes and I say that I mean what I say. Sheriff, my friend, come on up and say a few words, then we going to get rolling, and we going to let these guys say what's on their mind and what we have for you.
How everyone doing? I stand here with honor and pleasures to be your sheriff. And that the chief said a moment ago, this is a different day and time. When I started policing back, Earl was the sheriff, Earl Lee was my sheriff, and I learned a lot of things from Earl, but for some unknown reason, he taught us to dislike the city. I don't know why, but it was time when instead of us being on the same page with law enforcement, they did theirs and we did ours. We didn't assist each other because it ain't what the sheriff wanted. And we had to abide by the sheriff's rules. So but this time, like Sparks said, we growed up, done thing together, and him and I have created some programs to benefit our city and county employees. We got some things, we're going to do a drug task force, we talked about doing that. We already got the major crime unit that's combined. City got units on it, I got units on it. So if a crime happened out in the county or the city, that major crime unit housed that crime. So there's so many things we planning on doing just for our citizen here in Douglas County. But as chief said earlier, y'all heard this old saying 100 times, it take a community to raise a child. Well, it take community to assist us in law enforcement. We can't have eyes out there all the time, but we try our best to have them out there. But sometime, our eyes ain't enough. We need everybody in this room eyes. Ain't nothing too small that you can call that sheriff's department and tell us that we want us all, they don't need us. If you call us, no matter what it is, we got to come out there and see about it with honors. We don't, that's what we paid for, to come check on it. I don't, nobody saying, well, that's too small. I ain't going to call them about that. Any little small activity that you see could solve a major crime. And on the way we got it, with our community. Now, we had one bank robbery since I've been sheriff, one. My goal was to catch him, and I caught him. Took me a little while to catch him, but we caught him. And he's a child, 17 years old. Matter of fact, he robbed four banks, to be honest with you. So Gary, I mean, chief and I is trying to get some programs that reach out to our children. We losing at a real fast pace. My jail is slapped full of young guys that came to a dead end street and didn't know which way to turn, and they make the wrong turn, so therefore, they in our jail. And the chief trying to tell you, we want to tell you about some telltale sign that going to come about every time with your own child, that you can see and look into. Parents got away from what my parents done. My momma's come in our room and looked, we couldn't close no door, had to keep that door open all the time. She looked in our book bags, found what she wanted to find, and she confronted us with it. We got away from things that actually work on our children. But I don't, I'd rather take a kid and let him become a deputy sheriff instead of putting him in jail. That's, I don't get no joy out of putting nobody in jail. But if you create a problem, break the law, I'm obligated to put you there, and that's what I've been doing. But the kids, most of them come from broken homes. We got to really, please, please parents, really, these problems that these kids have started home. They don't start when they 15, 12, they start at a very early age. Some of y'all turn your head, I ain't going to say y'all, some parents turn their head when they know their child is doing something, they ain't got no business. So that's what we trying to get y'all to come out to these communities for, so we can tell y'all about these things. We can tell you something, you say, hmm, my kid done that the other day, I'm going to pay attention to that, see what happened from it. We, I took this job to make Douglas County a better place to live, work, and play. I was there 40 years, then I retired, stayed off for a year, went back to work to make sure that I could use my knowledge to make Douglas County a safe place to live and work and play. But again and again, we can't do it without y'all. Some of y'all in here probably assisted me in getting to where I'm at. So don't stop right there. Come to the town hall meetings, you can come to the sheriff's department any time you so desire. I never closed my door, I got there at 8 this morning, I just left. I'm there all the time because that's what the job requires. So I don't want nobody in here saying they can't reach our law enforcement. You can always reach us, you can always reach. And I'm going to tell you this right here, and I'm going to sit down. Parents, it's not illegal to spank your child. Please believe that. There ain't no way in the law book that you break a law if you spank your kid. Because if he deserve it-
She too.
She or he, y'all do what the Bible told you to do. Don't spatter rock. Because if you do spare it, eventually they going to see chief or me, one of us they going to look at. I don't want that. I want y'all to assist us in getting these teenagers back on the right road. That's all I ask. And anytime y'all want to come to the sheriff's office, you can come to our road call, you can come talk to me, come up there, I got a coffee pot, I keep going all the time. If you got a problem in the neighborhood, let's talk about it. If we can fix it, we going to fix it, I promise you that. And when I took office, I got the dips out of these patrol cars, riding around, I wanted to say, hey, how y'all doing? Back when I worked the zone, I knew everybody in my zone. You allowed to come out there, we sitting on the porch drinking glasses of tea, talking about what's going on in the neighborhood. And you know, we don't got so far away from that, and we probably never get a chance to get back to that, but I got them out, those cars, walking in the community, saying, hey, how y'all doing, how's everything going on in the neighborhood, and give you a business card. If you need something from the sheriff's department, call me. If something happening in the neighborhood, call me. Because if we get a report with the kids, you can take it to the bank, we going to get that parent's report, we going to get with them also. But if we can get with the kids, we'll get the parents. Now I went out and, I'm going to hurt Spark.
I'm going to pull your coat tether.
Okay. I went out, I didn't spend nobody's money in this room. I bought ice cream truck. And the community and different businesses in this community sponsor, one company may buy ice cream for May, another might buy the June ice cream. I go around to the special school lot, I try to go to all the subdivision, the homeowners association, gather all the kids, talk about what's going on in the little neighborhood, get them with free ice cream, and I got a little pamphlet that I give to the parents. Same thing we trying to tell y'all, I get it to the parents, educate them on some thing that they may not be aware of, what the kid may be doing, trying to be slick. So I educate them, educate them on that. So I'm right, I'm going to get my community back. I want everybody in this office, one day going to say, we can trust that sheriff's office along with the city police department. We going to do things like we supposed to do it. If one of my guys go wrong, I ain't sweeping under no rug, I got to deal with that. I ain't going to hold nothing back from my community. Now I'm so starting a community advisory board, I want y'all to get together, and we meet every month, y'all tell me what's going on in the community that we need to fix, and we going to fix that too. And Spark trying to pull my coat tether, something I was talking to y'all, and remember what I told you, come by and see me if you need to. Thank you.
He talking, like a Baptist preacher, eh? I don't need that, I don't need that, like a Baptist preacher. But I just wanted him to really get up and say something, because you ought to see that we have a love for one another and the love between the police department and sheriff department, and that's how we roll to serve you, it's about serving you. If you don't see that, you just reading in the paper, and you really don't really get to know it and feel it and understand it. So I feel it was really necessary for him to come up so you could see it, feel it, hear it, and now you can go back and tell somebody else. Now, the reason why we here is we going to talk about active shooter. And the first, I was talking about Lieutenant Lottlemilk, and he's going to go, it's going to take about 10, 15 minutes, right? 10 to 15 minutes. Then the other program, we going to tell you what to do, we going to tell you how to fight, what to do, and all of that, you know, from our perspective. You may go to another run, another program, they tell you something else. But I'm going to tell you, if somebody coming at me, I'm going down fighting. I'm going down fighting. That's just where it is. All right, so let me get out the way, y'all get up for LT Lottlemilk, and we going to get the show on the road. Y'all give him a hand.
Give me my water. Yeah, that's yours. Like I say, I'm going to share my experience, I'm going to tell you who I am, I'm going to share my experience. I can't say it's the right way or anything like that, it was an experience. I tell you, I've been in law enforcement 24 years with the police department, I've been SWAT team 20 years. That being said, I've been around a lot of gunfire, and I've been trained for every situation. But what I experienced in Las Vegas was something that I would never, I'll never forget. The videos, I'm going to show you a couple of videos. One video is a video of my wife, it was, I tell you about the trip. The trip was Las Vegas Route 91 Harvest Fest concert. My wife, it was her birthday, I'm not going to tell you what's birthday it was, but she'll kill me. But it was her birthday, so she picked, we hadn't had a vacation all year, so she picked, this is going to be our vacation. She found this out in Las Vegas. It had, it's country music, had our favorite country music artists, let's do it, let's invite friends, let's invite family, and let's go out there and have a little getaway and have a good time. So her sister from Chicago came with us, and then two other friends came with us. At this concert, the very last night, it's just me, my wife, and her sister at the concert. The other two friends, they were catching a flight home that night, so they didn't go with us. The Harvest Fest, this is a kind of an outlay of how, it's an outside venue. I don't know how much y'all know about this, I'm not, and I'm not going to spill over into Captain Stafford's presentation, I'm just going to tell you my story and explain what I did to survive and got my family out of there. And I'm no hero, I'm not trying here trying to say I did something right to survive, I survived, but I did what I knew what to do to survive. So I've got a couple of videos, they're graphic, they got language, they got foul language, one of them's off of YouTube, so it's straight off of YouTube, so the language on there, you know, if you're offended by real talk, you're going to hear some real talk in real live action. And the first video I'm going to show you is a video my wife took me, took a, sorry, took at the event. To build it up, I'll show you this first video. We're at the concert, we didn't get there, we wanted to go see Jason Aldean, he was closing that night. We didn't get there probably, maybe an hour before he got on stage, we'd already been two days, it was a three day event, we've already been there for two days of concert going, having a great time, flawless, everybody out there having a good time. Sunday night comes, we get there a little bit later because everybody was leaving, we went to dinner, got there about an hour before the concert, before Jason Aldean took stage. And as all of y'all, if y'all have watched the news, when Jason gets up there, he's probably into his like third song when these shots start ringing out. My first, my first thought, fireworks. I'm standing, I put this in perspective, here's the stage, Mandalay Bay was over here, they had a turf area, we were probably about right here, right behind the turf area. So I hear a couple of shots, a couple, well, I think of fireworks. We look over there, hear a couple pops, I don't see any sparkles, it's like, that's weird. The concert's still going, so maybe it's nothing. A couple, so you'll see it on the videos, a couple, a few seconds later, you hear the volley of shots as he's starting his next song. Me, okay, I recognize that's gunfire now. I'm thinking, well, they're in a shootout in the parking lot across from us, we passed 50 cops coming in this place. We're okay, there's a, there's a concrete barrier down Las Vegas Boulevard, they can't shoot us, we're good, you know? Who knows, who knew it'd be shooting from up high? Soon as that volley goes off, the lights go out, and then this is, I'll show you the video of my wife. She starts taking the video, once the lights went out, she started recording on her phone. Mandalay Bay, the stage was to the left, as you can see. At this point, we turn, we're like, we got to get out of here, we got to move. So we get, I'm behind her, she runs through an area that is, has lawn chairs in, she falls down. Her sister's behind her, her sister falls down, I'm behind her sister. So I pick her sister up, when I get up, she's gone, I lost her. She continued to run, I knew which kind of direction she went into, so that's, that was my next objective, was to find her. I knew I had to keep moving, but I knew how to find her. We're just kind of following the crowd at this point, trying to find a gate, we're just trying to find a gate to get out of this place. But the shots just kept coming, they kept coming. As they kept coming, I knew, I knew that they was coming from high, so I was thinking rooftop, I was thinking rooftop Mandalay Bay, I knew exactly which direction it was coming from. So I was thinking high top, rooftop, they can't get to him. I'm thinking we passed, we passed 50 cops coming in this place, they can't get to him. This, this is made up, this is kind of all, a bunch of different videos put together, That one's kind of hard to hear, but there's a couple of single shots, there's three single shots that rang out right before this. So people are already starting to move, so that made me think something already happened to the front of the crowd. He's still singing, so everybody's just still having a good time. Then he runs off. This time, this is when my wife started video, using her video. This time, this is when my wife started video, using her video, and we're just a minute into it. But I show you this, the crowd is still standing there, nobody really understands what's going Who, who would have any idea going to this outside venue like this, that this is gonna happen, so, my mindset is just like everybody else, I couldn't carry a gun in there, I couldn't carry a pocket knife, I didn't have anything, but nothing, I had nothing, but my wallet. So I, I had no defense mechanism whatsoever if I were to encounter anybody, so all I could do is just keep moving. I'm searching for cover. I knew you'd have people, if you see people, people were going down doing the old high school, what they learned in elementary school, the old tornado drill, when you go down and cover your neck in a tornado drill, people were doing that everywhere, they're just laying down, they're balled up, laying down on this asphalt. I knew the rounds were skipping off the ground, so I knew we had to keep, we had to keep moving, until I could find some real cover, concrete, metal, steel, anything besides, I mean, people were hiding behind porta potties, people behind, under lounge chairs, people behind trashcans. As you can see, they're still, they're still crouched down in the kill zone. And at this point, I watched this video, and I found myself coming out of this gate right here. That's me right there, and my sister-in-law Brooke. I was still looking for my wife at this point. We came out of the gate, I'm looking for my wife, couldn't find her, had to go back in the venue to go find her. Those officers, I remember that officer right there telling me, "Run east," he said, "Run east, run east." I knew, I knew which way east was, I knew, I had to keep running east. So we ran, we ran back, I found some bleachers, some metal bleachers, I felt pretty safe behind the metal bleachers, and I started calling my wife. The phones were on overload, so my phone wasn't working, the phones were basically, they was just shut down out there because so many people were calling, I don't want it. It finally went through, and I finally got in touch with her, and she probably wasn't here 50 feet from me, so I'm like telling her, "Come to the palm tree, come to the palm tree," well, she, she was like, "I'm at a palm tree." You know, there was like three palm trees, so I knew she was close by at that point, I thought, "I got her now." So we get back together, where the shots kept ringing out, and you could smell the gun, the gunpowder off them shots, where they were, the frag rounds were hitting the ground, so, and I could tell he was shooting our direction again, so I was like, "We gotta move away from these bleachers," because there's holes in between the bleachers, and I knew they could skip rounds right through those bleachers. So we continued to move, and I moved all the way, we're only five minutes into it. The shooting lasts for 10 minutes, solid, so I'm sure I'm still at this point, I probably have, I may have gotten back with my wife at this point, and then I was like, "We gotta seek better cover." I won't show you this whole video, you can find it on YouTube if you wanna continue to watch it, but I'll show you my, what, what happened with us, is, direction, we start here, we were trying to, there's a gate right here, I believe right in here somewhere, so that's where we came up, there's kind of a funnel right there, the gate, that's where you saw me come in, or come out, we went back in, there's bleachers lined up right through here, went, we, this is where I met back up with my wife, we got, we were behind the bleachers, I could tell, we could tell he was shooting our direction again, so we moved, we continued to move all the way very, to the very back, on the other side of this was two classroom trailers, like you'd see at a high school or something, I guess they used them in those office buildings or something, but we ducked in, in behind it, and there's a big fence, there's about a 12-foot fence all the way around this place, where people were climbing that fence, my wife was trying to climb the fence too, but I knew once I got in between those two buildings that, that's, that's good cover. I, I can no longer see Mandalay Bay where I'm at, I've got, I see steel steps, we're, we're pretty safe right here. The crowds are still trying to get out, my next thing is, I'm thinking, well, there's a bomb, this is a terrorist attack, so the bomb's gonna go off next, I said, "We need to stick right here." There was actually a couple other off-duty officers in the same location I was, and we just, we just hunkered down for about 20 minutes until it was totally over with, and then we found a way out. There was a way out, this back gate, we went over to Tropicana, and we just continued on back to our hotel. You know, people ask me all the time, you know, I just reverted back to my training, what I was trained, did you see, you know, did you, we're in the middle of it, I don't, you know, I was there, I was in the middle of it, I can't really tell you what I saw, what, I tried to help as many people around me to, to keep them calm, as you can see, I was, I was coming out, how calm I was, I was just trying to find my wife, that's all I could do, all I could do was just keep moving, stay calm, and find cover, find my wife, my sister-in-law, and we're getting out of here, because I had no idea, that's the first time I've ever been to Vegas, so I'm not real familiar with Vegas, so I just knew I had to keep moving, and once we got out of the venue, and we got past the police line right there at Tropicana, I ask myself all the time, should I have gone back to try to help, maybe, could I have left my wife and my sister-in-law in the middle of Las Vegas? No, that wouldn't have been fair, so we continued on back to the hotel, got to the hotel, and then just started watching on TV from that point. That's my story, like I say, I was no hero, I did what I was trained to do, like you guys are fixing to get some of this training from Captain Stafford, you know, the run, hide, fight, is, just keep moving, you can't be an easy target, some of these people unfortunately became in an area where they probably ended up just being easy targets, and they, they fell victim to this, this horrific event. I'll take a couple of questions about the, anything you got for me, if not, I'll turn this over to Captain Stafford, and he can continue on the presentation.
Y'all wanna hold the questions till we get this other one done? Can we do that, write them down on piece of paper? But with Brad's experience, we want you to, you know, who knows when somebody gonna do a deed like this? Captain Stafford will come to you, and whenever you go somewhere, plan, plan, plan. Go to outdoor concert, plan, Google the area. So when you get there, something go down, you know, never be planning, it cuts down your, it cuts down your thinking process. It cut it down, so, going to the malls during Christmas, plan. You may have been to the mall over here in Douglasville 200 times, pull up the plan, pull up the full plan, so you know where to go, if something happen, I know which way, I know where, where I need to go. You go to the mall in Atlanta, before, before you go, put the plan together, something go down, I got, I got a plan, I'm not lost, I'm not running around like a chicken with my head cut off, alright? Brad, Captain Stafford is our, over our training division, he does a great job of training our officers, and, and he does a great job of training our citizens. This is part of the training for you all, this is our last one for the year. I will say, check out Facebook page, we're gonna be, we're gonna start off with excellent training for you all, so come get it, and he's one reason why other agencies wanna steal our people. But I, I'm asking for you all to talk to the council and the mayor, you know, and, because we, we need to do something to keep our men and women here. And they could talk about funds, money, all that, you know, hey, if something happen, you, you don't give me the job right now. I like to play, y'all, don't play it, don't play it, y'all, don't, don't show that. Don't show that, but, but you know, I'd stick up for my people. Yeah, I gotta stick up for them, and I appreciate if y'all help us stick up, help to stick up for our men, so, and women. Y'all get up for Captain Stafford, you gonna run through this thing real quick? And if, and if you all, when we get to the question and answer, we got a mic right here in the middle, I'll pull it up a little closer here, and then we gonna, we gonna get on up out here, well, we gonna cut that, he, y'all getting a sign.
Good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay? Well, one of the things we do, we don't train the police officers, we, we train the citizens, and I'm glad to see the room is so full, because we've done some of these, there've been two or three people out here in the audience, so this makes it worth it, and hopefully this will be some information that you can take back to your family, back to your friends, your loved ones, and talk about this, because it's no different than a fire drill, or anything else that you try to pre-plan for, so that you have some expectation of what's gonna occur, and what your reaction's gonna be. Because when you're in a situation, as Lieutenant Lauderdale Milk said, he was in this with all of that training and so on, he just reacted because he's been trained in what to do. You will not be able to think through it at the time. When you're in an emergency situation, that is not how the human brain works, and we're gonna talk about that here in just a minute. You have to have some pre-planning, and think about what you're gonna do before it happens. We'll talk about why here in just a second. First of all, I like to define what active shooter means, because in the news media, they like to use interchangeable terms like active shooter, mass killing, mass shooting, so on, those all have different definitions, they're not the same thing, and if you lump them all together, you start to get a skewed view of how often these things actually occur, how many of them there are, how many people were hurt or killed, and so on. Active shooter is simply somebody actively engaged in killing or attempting to kill in a confined and populated area. Usually use firearms, but they have used other things, as all of you know, you watch the news just like I do. These are some roundabout statistics that are fairly up to date, based upon FBI statistics, piecing together three different reports, they're trying to keep up, and it's hard, but these are fairly accurate. I had to update them today before I came in here, because we keep having these things occur, seems like every two weeks coming up. The actual number, average number is four to five weeks in the United States, every four to five weeks. I suspect that it's going to be, we're, they'll be shortening that period soon, because when they started from the 2000 to 2013 report, they had an average number, from 13 to 15, they had an average number, and now those numbers are going up, so they're happening more frequently in recent history than they used to, if that makes sense. Right now, we're at about 20 per year in the United States. I went back and looked at some of the active shooter statistics on my computer this morning, and I just looked back for about the last five months, over 100 people killed, nine different occurrences in nine different states. So we'll think back about the Texas church shooting, we'll think back about Las Vegas, some of the other ones, but we, we have a tendency to forget some of the smaller ones, where four or five people were killed, and so on, because we've just become, this is like normal, and it can't get normal to us, this cannot become normal. What I hope, honestly, for, for, just for lack of a better term, what I hope is that all of us start to get really pissed off that this is happening, and start to change our mindset about what we're gonna do when somebody enters a room that we're in with a firearm. Because what we've been doing isn't working. Can everybody agree on that? When we lay down on the ground, and we teach our kids to lay down on the ground, 59 people dead, 500 people injured in Las Vegas, it was an open venue, and I'm not blaming these people for being victims, I'm just saying, look at that, it was an open-air venue, there were plenty of ways to get out and get away from that, but people have a tendency to freeze and hunker down and lay down on the ground, and so on, and we gotta train you, we gotta, we gotta start talking about this and what other things we can do. The Texas shooting, they laid down on the floors in the pews, they didn't know what to do, they were terrified. But these people are coming into that room, coming into the schools, coming into the workplace, their mindset is to kill as many people as they can kill in as short a period of time as they can. That's what they're there for. Period. And we gotta start doing something about it. So we're gonna talk about an understanding, and, and understanding and having a perception of your environment, how we perceive our environment, is what we have a tendency to do is try to make things normal. Lieutenant Lauderdale Milk has been around firearms his entire life, when he hears those, those snap, those gunshots going off in the distance, he said, "I thought maybe they were fireworks," because that would be okay, that would be normal, that's something that the human brain does, try to make sense of things. We gotta have a plan before something happens. Know your strengths, and we'll, we'll explain what that means in just a minute, and understand what to expect once the police get there, and what you can do to try to get back in touch with your family. Lieutenant Lauderdale Milk said, "Cell phones don't work," because there's so much cellphone activity in such a short area overwhelmed the towers. School shootings, it happens. Workplace shootings, San Bernardino, it happens. You get thousands of people trying to make phone calls back and forth in one small area, they don't work anymore. And I just don't. Dynamics of perception, I told you that we start to get desensitized to environments that we're used to, so you spend most of your time, really realistically, at work, probably, and so you go into work, and you sit down at that desk, and you're so used to being there, that you get desensitized to that environment, and when something out of the ordinary happens, what our brains do is try to make sense of that, so those gunshots become, well, maybe that was fireworks, maybe that was somebody dropping something upstairs, and you try to rationalize it. We have to stop doing that, because that takes time away from us, time that we could be trying to escape, formulate a plan, barricade ourselves somewhere, and so on. So our brains take the shortest route to help you mentally negotiate through unexpected occurrences. Alright, you also try to associate with previous experiences you have. Human beings do this in all their environments, but especially in environments they're familiar Inclination toward passivity. Predisposed to assume things will carry on a predictable way. Most people, when you, when the reporters come up after one of these events, they say, "Tell me about it, what was that like?" And the person's like, "It was surreal, I, I didn't know what was going on, I couldn't believe it," because it was not in their normal, um, daily life, they could, they literally couldn't perceive what was taking place, because it was so far outside their norm. It's also natural for us to follow the crowd, once the crowd, once somebody makes a decision, let's move, and they all start going in one direction, if you speak with Lieutenant Lauderdale Milk, he'll say, "The vast majority of the people were all going out one direction, falling on that one exit." Instead of trying to find where the nearest exit was, where the best exit was, where was the exit farthest away from where the shooting was coming, and so on. That's group think, when somebody makes a decision, people go, "Well, I don't know what I doing, maybe they do." Right? And I'm sure some of you can think in your own lives, sometimes that's happened, right? Everybody sat around, nobody was doing, and finally somebody said, "Let's do this," and we're like, "Okay." Let's hope it's a good decision, let's train ourselves to make good choices, give ourselves the best opportunity to survive. If a group of people are cowering in fear, the tendency to cower with them, we're not gonna cower anymore. It doesn't help, they don't care that you gave up, you can't talk them out of it, you can't talk sense into them, you will not rationalize with them, they're irrational, or they wouldn't be there with a gun, killing people they don't know. Children, old people, women, they care about numbers so that they can be famous, or whatever, I don't know what it is, I assume that's what it is, so they can have the bigger number next week than they had last week. Geographical awareness, Chief talked about this a little bit, take some time to understand where you're going, understand where the exits are when you get there, how can I get out of here if something bad happens? Where could I go that's safe? Where is there cover? In your environment that you deal with, in your home and in your work that you, that you're at all the time, you should be looking at those areas and say, "If something bad happened here, if somebody came in to my workplace with a gun, and I had the ability to get up and get away from my desk, but I, maybe I couldn't get outside, they trapped me in here." Where's the... Where's the room in here I could go that I could best barricade the door and maybe find some improvised weapons in that room to fight if they breached through that door and they came in here to get me? What's the best place?" And then talk about it with your coworkers. I'll show you a video here in a minute. Everyone in here can participate in saving your own life. Everyone can. But it's going to help a lot if you talk about it and do just a little bit of brief practicing about what we're going to do first. So you have a game plan. And then you can overcome these people. You really can. Even though they're armed and you're not, if everybody in the room decides, "We're not going to lay down and take it," you'll win by sheer numbers. Period. But you have to have the mindset that you are going to fight. If it comes, it's necessary to fight, you cannot run, you cannot hide and get away, then you have to fight. And you have to decide now, not when this is happening. You have to decide now, and you have to talk to your families about it. The OODA loop. Important you understand the OODA loop. The OODA loop's been talked about for years and years in the military and police work. It's the way that the human brain works when we're making a decision. OODA, observe, orient, decide, and act. It is the cycle that we go through as human beings before we perceive an event, decide what we're going to do about it, and then do it. Simple, right? Because for cops, it's simple, right? So the acronym OODA, and we, cops talk about it all the time, the OODA loop, the OODA loop. Why do we talk about it? Because that process, one, two, three, four, observe, orient, decide, act. It takes time to do that. We don't think about, you, you pull out a knife, I see the knife, I perceive what it is, I understand it's a threat, then I decide what I'm going to do to react to you pulling a knife on me. We think, "Well, that's just an instantaneous thing. I mean, it's just a thought." No, it's not. If I know she's going to pull the knife out on me, we're just practicing. I say, "Go ahead and pull the knife." She pulls the knife. I pull my gun. Takes about a second and a half. That's a long time when your life's being threatened, a second and a half. What if I don't know she's going to pull the knife? What if I didn't know that today someone was going to come into the school administrative offices where I work and start shooting everybody? Do you think that that's so far removed from what I expected was going to happen that it's going to take me much longer than a second and a half to perceive that and decide what I'm going to do about it? You, you're very right. It's going to take a lot longer. So that OODA loop becomes bigger and bigger and bigger, more time, more time, more time. We have to start to shrink that OODA loop. Part of the way we do that is we train for things, and it shortens that OODA loop. The other reason why we need to understand the OODA loop is because the bad guy has the same loop. So he decides, he gets up in the morning, he decides, he loads up his automatic rifle, and he walks into a church in Texas, and he's going to start shooting parishioners. And what did he expect that the parishioners were going to do when he started shooting them? They're going to lay down. They're going to give up. They're going to try to reason with me. They're going to scream, whatever. But did he ever thought, "They're all going to turn around and rush me? They're going to start throwing things at me. Some of them are going to move one way, some of them are going to move another." Did he think about any of that? No, sir. Exactly right. So when you do something that's outside of what they thought was going to happen, what happens there, OODA loop? It gets bigger and bigger. We talk about it in police work because if we're out there with the suspect and they do something, they start to use force against us, we try to change what that situation is at that time and what we're doing to react to it because we know that now they have to perceive what we're doing. So we act. And when we act, they say, "Whoa, hold on, I didn't expect that." And now their OODA loop just got big. Who's winning? The person who's acting is winning. Understand that. The person who's reacting is losing. And it's your life. It's your loved one's life you're in that room with. You have to act. You have to do something that gets their attention and their focus and makes them say, "Well, okay, hold on, I got to adjust now." And give yourself some time. The Department of Justice, a few years ago, put together this video. It's their first attempt to try to help train the public. There are some other programs out there, and I understand that, and I've looked at them too, and they're, and they're good. Any training's better than none. I like this one because it's simple. People have a tendency, you come to this program, you might never come to another program again, or it might be three or four years. This is simple. Run, hide, fight. Anybody can remember that. So I'll get to this video, and they do do, it's kind of like a little movie, but I do know we have at least one young person in here. It's, you know, fairly realistic. It might be a little violent, so I'll let mom decide. Probably seen a video game worse than this, but I just want to put it out there.
It may feel like just another day at the office. But occasionally, life feels more like an action movie than reality. The authorities are working hard to protect you and to protect our public spaces. But sometimes, bad people do bad things. Their motivations are different. The warning signs may vary, but the devastating effects are the same. And unfortunately, you need to be prepared for the worst. If you were ever to find yourself in the middle of an active shooter event, your survival may depend on whether or not you have a plan. The plan doesn't have to be complicated. There are three things you could do that make a difference. Run, hide, fight. First and foremost, if you can get out, do. Always try and escape or evacuate, even when others insist on staying. Encourage others to leave with you, but don't let them slow you down with indecision. Remember what's important, you, not your stuff. Leave your belongings behind and try to find a way to get out safely. Trying to get yourself out of harm's way needs to be your number-one priority. Once you're out of the line of fire, try to prevent others from walking into the danger zone and call 911. If you can't get out safely, you need to find a place to hide. Act quickly and quietly. Try to secure your hiding place the best you can. Turn out lights, and if possible, remember to lock doors. Silence your ringer and vibration mode on your cellphone. And if you can't find a safe room or closet, try to conceal yourself behind large objects that may protect you. Do your best to remain quiet and calm. As a last resort, if your life is at risk, whether you are alone or working together as a group, fight. Act with aggression. Improvise weapons. Disarm him and commit to taking the shooter down, no matter what. Try to be aware of your environment. Always have an exit plan. Know that in an incident like this, victims are generally chosen randomly. The event is unpredictable and may evolve quickly. The first responders on the scene are not there to evacuate or tend to the injured. They are well-trained and are there to stop the shooter. Your actions can make a difference for your safety and survival. Be aware and be prepared. And if you find yourself facing an active shooter, there are three key things you need to remember to survive. Run, hide, fight.
Whenever I watch that video, the first thing, you know, when they barricaded themselves in that office and the lady goes, "Oh, huh." How many of you thought when the guy picked that chair up, he was going to hit the lady with the chair? Every time I saw him, I was like, "He's going to hit that lady." And I can hardly blame him. I can hardly blame, one time, just bam. I liked the video. Again, it's simple. It gets it pointed across. It's got some good points under each of those run, hide, fight, silencing your cellphone. That is not the time that you want to receive a text or a, you know, that sound going off when you're trying to hide from these people. So this is just kind of a reminder, again, on my slides up here, of what they talked about in that video. Hiding, if you can find a good hiding space, you don't think you can get out of the building. If you can get out of the building, get out of the building. If you cannot get out of the building and you feel there is a place that you can barricade yourself, that they may not be able to get in, if they did get in, there are some, at least improvised weapons inside there that you could use. It's a pre-planned event with your coworkers. Then go there and hide and barricade it and try to be as quiet as you can. But if they come in to your space, you have to fight. And if you have a little bit of a plan beforehand, again, this is going to go much better for you than if you've never thought or talked about it with the people that you share that space with. Try to encourage other people to act, to action. Run, go hide, get them doing something rather than cowering under their desks or cowering on the floor or cowering out in the field at this concert. But do not stop for them. Tell them what they need to do, then you do what you know you're supposed to do. Most of the time, they will follow you. They're going to follow somebody who's taking action. But if they don't, you encouraging people and you taking action is going to save a lot more people than if you stay there with that one person who is, has no intention of ever moving. You got to leave them. And try to take some other people with you. This next video, I like it quite a bit because it goes into a little bit more detail about some ways, simple ways, that everybody can become involved in trying to fight this attacker off if you've barricaded yourself somewhere. And how it is that you can use maybe your own strengths. Not everybody feels comfortable tackling the guy with a rifle and so on. But maybe you can see yourself in some of these kids. He's gone to a college campus, and he's, he's a counterterrorism guy, and they hire him to go in there and teach students, which I think is a fantastic idea. And he teaches them some simple things. I will warn you, he's not from Douglasville. He's hard to understand. But if you listen, I think you can understand enough to get the point across. Both of these videos you can get off YouTube, by the way. It's not something super secret. You can get on YouTube and find it and watch it again with your family.
Like an average American 20-year-old.
Basically, what we're dealing with here is a last resort survival measure. The active shooter or all the terrorists is on the premises, shooting people. How would you know, first of all? Well, it's going to be kind of obvious. Screams, gunfire, you know how to recognize gunfire? I don't know if most of you have heard live gunfire. It doesn't sound like in the movies. Very important you learn how to recognize gunfire in a crowded environment. We teach that in program. We distinguish between real gunfire and non-real gunfire. You recognize gunfire, you're hearing screams, perhaps you even see casualties or injured people, you see people running away. You are not able to run away and make it. Why would one not be able to run away and escape? Because you're trapped. Now, let's talk about responding to an active shooter and the timeliness of it. How long do you think it will take you, all of you, to get off your chair from where you are right now and make it to me, buddy? If you were running for your life? How many seconds? I guarantee you, top three. But I don't want to guarantee it. I want you to do it. Very nice job. That was excellent. I knew I could count on UCI for all this. Good stuff. Fantastic. Very nice. Now, once again, would you be prepared to do that? Well, guess what? I think so. You're hearing screaming, you're hearing shouts, you're hearing gunfire. Are you going to know it's coming? It's getting closer and louder? This thing is locked down? Sure you will. You be ready. But I'm not proposing that you wait sitting in your chairs like that. That would be for surprise and to that door that would, totally unexpected. Not going to be the case. I will teach you how to where to stand and how to position yourself so you have a tactical advantage versus a shooter coming to that door. So when he comes to that door, he's not going to go. And then come in. Okay? He's coming in! He's, he's looking to kill. He's looking for the target. You won't see this two sides. You have a coordinated action coming on him. One of you, at least one of you, if not both of you, are going to be successful at, hey, again, not putting handcuffs on the guy and arresting him or killing him. No, stopping him from shooting, bringing him to the floor, and containing him on the floor so he can't continue his violent action. Very simple, okay? Since, we're going to use two examples here. One is on this door that has one side only. And then two is that door that has two sides in the event that you have two type of scenarios that come at you. And that's why I use this classroom as well because of two kinds of door. Now, what will help you, because obviously, not the whole classroom needs to be here. Who is going to make contact? The first two, top, the first two. So two people on each door, on both sides of the door. No, wait, no, I'm explaining, and then I'll call you. Okay, one, one. Second, second. What does everybody else do? Where? Now, where would you be? In front of him? You just learned a big lesson. When he comes in, he's looking straight ahead. He's looking straight ahead. So safety says, anybody who doesn't have a roll, and many of you shouldn't have a roll in this case, get out of the zone. Get out of the kill zone. So go there, in the far corner against the same wall he comes to, or that far corner. Definitely not in front of him. But there's going to be a few of you that are going to be required to do one very important thing that's going to assure the success of those by the door. And that's attracting his vision and attention on them by throwing objects and running across the room in the opposite direction, if you can help it, than where the attackers, defenders are going to be positioned at. So if I'm coming here, you don't want me, as a shooter, to turn and look here, right? What you're going to do? You're going to go like that and throw object, running this way. I'm coming this way. Bing, that's it. Now, how much time do I have, honestly, when I come to that door? One second, baby. So we're talking, time has now shrunk significantly for the shooter to be able to be shooting effectively. So just practice with me one time the drill. I'm here, no, come here. One, and a U, right there. Good, good. What will help you a lot is actually push the knee here. Yeah, because that will collapse a lot easier than my entire body, especially from strong. So just aim for the knee. You see that? That's it. Try one time. The knee, yeah, oh yeah. March, brother. Nice job, nice job. Shots fired in the corridor. Shots fired in the corridor, nice and safe. Yes, sir. Right on. So, you okay? So, shots fired! Move, 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 move. You good, Steve?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, so what did you shoot at?
What's that?
What did you shoot at?
One shot in the middle. It was one person, one shot.
You did see a person? You managed to see a person?
Well, it was dark, so...
All right, all right. Now, did you notice that?
Yes.
Did that throw you off any?
For sure, because I had to look around it.
Right, right, right.
That took away a potential target area.
Right there, right there.
My first response was to look for a target other than this.
Other than this? That took you a what, a second, a second and a half?
For sure, it played into the old Yoda.
Of course.
So it delayed me a second or two to look for another target. Maximum one shot and I don't even know if it was a person.
So we're now cut down to maybe three shots from before with handgun, with broad daylight, with one side surprise, to maximum one shot without knowing if it's even a target. That's a big improvement, right? Okay, one more time. Shots fired, shots fired. All right! No martial arts involved. This is basic stuff. Football, tackle, wrestling, overwhelm the target, overwhelm the threat. This is with a machine gun, guys. If he had a box cutter, do you think he had better chances? I don't think so. Right? You have to do this with a box cutter to make a difference. No way. He wants to do that. No way. He can't even do one, barely one with a gun. Box cutter, no chance. This information is essential. Anybody out there get caught in a mall, any terrorist attack, or any type of attack? Anybody get caught in a school? Essential, you know, get organized, want to, get over here, ready, ready, this is the game, that's the plan. Can you explain what I just taught you today in a shortened version to a bunch of people? Yes! Of course you can. That's why I decided to bring this on to universities and schools. Why? Because it's an educational system. That's what we do. We educate. That's a perfect platform to educate the next generation in creating a safer society.
That man sits there and talks about time shrinking and how they can give those kids just a little bit more time, just a second, two seconds. The Oodaloope. The Oodaloope is what he's talking about. And with just a little bit of pre-planning, couple kids throwing their shoes, somebody running across the back of the room, they put a chair in front of the door, put a table in front of the door. The guy comes in, he expects to open the door and start mowing people down, boom, 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 boom. But he opens the door and comes in and something's not what he expected it to be. And he said, "Now I had to stop and think and I had to turn and look and find..." Second and a half, second and a half, second and a half. And in the meantime, those kids can tackle that guy, lay down on top of him, take the gun away and wait for the police or for more people to come and help them. That's what it takes. Action. Just a little bit of action threw that guy off to the point he no longer had the tactical advantage and he had a rifle. We gotta start teaching our loved ones, our kids, and everybody we know and love and care about that action is the way out of these situations. Inaction is what they expect. It's what they've thought that's going, the way it's gonna be. They're there, they're all hopped up thinking they're gonna have all the power and they're gonna have, all the actions gonna be coming from them and then we did something different. And it's a surprise to them. And that surprise gives us just the amount of time that we need. We talk about law enforcement's response to active shooter events. And the sad truth is, they usually don't take very long. Las Vegas was an anomaly where that guy sat up there and shot for 10-plus minutes. Most of these only take a couple minutes. Somebody asked about our response time over here. It takes time for those 911 calls to get to our dispatch center, for them to then dispatch a police officer and for the police officers to get there. And the sad truth is, you're probably gonna be going through this event without us. Historically speaking, you're going through at least the first few minutes without us. How much devastation can happen with an automatic weapon in two or three or four minutes? And we've seen it. So you all have to resolve yourself to the fact that some action is gonna have to take place prior to law enforcement getting there. Once we get there, the first video made mention the fact some people think that we will come immediately to them and help them. That's what we're there for. That's what we do. Unfortunately, in these events, if you are running out of the building, we are going to let you run out of the building, we're gonna run in the building. We're not gonna stop inside the building as you pass us. If you're shot and hurt and you're trying to stumble your way out of there, we will not stop and provide first aid to you. Don't expect it. Understand that that's what's gonna happen and keep moving outside. We will get you some help. But first, we're gonna stop this person from continuing to hurt other people or there're just gonna be more and more and more casualties. Once we get enough people there to flood that building with police officers, then we'll start helping the people that are on the outside that are hurt and getting them to triage areas so that you can get some medical care. But that is, that is our goal. And an active shooter is go directly to the threat and eliminate that threat. They can give up, we can arrest them. They can not give up, they can shoot themselves very often is what they do. Or, we can shoot them. But, we can't stop until there's no more threat to anyone before we go back and start helping the victims. Understand that we're gonna be dressed all differently. Anytime one of these happens, every jurisdiction in the area is gonna be showing up. So there're gonna be police officers dressed differently, some plainclothes, some off-duty, GBI agents, FBI agents, DEA agents, anybody that hears this go, they're all trained to respond directly to them. Matter of fact, one of the biggest problems we have in these events is so many police and ambulance and fire units show up, they block all the roads. And then we can't get ambulances to get in there and get to people. So we've trained and trained on that. But what we can't have is other people coming to that scene, helping to block those roadways up and keeping medical vehicles from being able to get in and out of there and more law enforcement, whoever else needs to be there. You really can't help your loved ones inside that business. We all want to, and I understand that, but you really can't. And so, helping, once law enforcement starts to arrive, staying out of the way helps us help your loved ones. I think we've pretty much, all this stuff, I think is pretty much explanatory, self-explanatory as I've just talked to you about, interactions with law enforcement while we're on the scene. If you have pertinent information to give 911, by all means, call 911. I saw them. There were two of them. This is how they were dressed. This is the last office I saw them enter. That's great information. We need to have that. But, people, again, they inundate the 911 system with calls very often and it gets to be so overwhelming for them down there that they can't get the real information out to those who need it. So please, think about this. When you're practicing and pre-planning, you will call when you have good physical descriptions, good information that is timely, that needs to be known right now by law enforcement. You know, 10 minutes into an active shooter event, calling and saying there's someone down at the school shooting, that's not necessary, right? We know, we're common. But if you know where they are, you know what they look like, you know how many of them there are, we need to know about it. Once you've reached a safe location, and again, a pre-planned assembly point for, and this isn't gonna be when you're out maybe at the mall, but if it's where you work, you can talk about your coworkers. This is where we need to go. Because you need to account for everybody again, right? We'd like you to. So we come to you and you're the office manager, say, "Look, I have 12 people that work for me and there's only 11 of them here and this is where we all planned on meeting. We're missing Diane." That helps us. We know who we're looking for. Preparing yourself, preparing your family and your staff with an emergency action plan. That's just a fancy word for saying, "Have a plan." Write it down. Train your new employees. Maybe a couple times a year, like a fire drill. You do your fire drill, everybody goes out, standing in the parking lot, talks. Takes about 20 minutes to get them all back in because they don't want to come back to work. Okay? When you do one, have that remind you the next month, do an active shooter plan. Where there's a place, if you get out of the building, that you go, a safe distance away. This is where we'll meet. If we get barricaded in, this is the office that we go to. This is the conference room. This is what we'll use to barricade the door. Here's a little backpack we put together with some improvised weapons. You know, we put golf clubs, baseball bats, or whatever it is you come up with that you could use to defend yourself. Preparing yourself with some of these things beforehand can make all the difference in the world and a little training, like the gentleman with the students. If you can go over that with your employees, if this happens, Bill and Bob are gonna tackle the guy when he comes in. They're gonna stand over here on this wall. Jane and Mary are gonna be the distraction. When he comes in thinking everybody's gonna be right in front of him, they're gonna throw their shoes at him and move in the other direction and then the two guys are gonna tackle him and subdue him. Whatever you come up with, come up with something. Because that reduces that amount of time, again, that you have to be trying to plan it during the event. You'll go, everybody goes in, barricade the door. Everybody know what they're gonna do? Yep. And now you wait. See if he come, if he finds you. If he finds you, you gotta fight. And you gotta fight with everything you have. This is their most recent church shooting. We, I put this slide in here this morning because I assumed we were gonna have some questions about church shootings. And maybe we won't. There's a microphone in the middle of the room here. Since we are putting this on City TV, we ask if you have some questions here in a minute. Specific questions related to what we're talking about tonight, please. You can come up to the mic here in the center, you can ask the questions. We'll do our best to try to answer them. If for some reason you cannot get up, you have physical issues or whatever your reasons are, if you'll raise your hand, I'll try to bring a microphone, have somebody bring a microphone to you. When we're dealing with church shootings, we got some questions already since this happened. What should we do? One of the things, you can hire off-duty police officers to come and sit through your church services. There are several churches here in Douglasville that are already doing so. You can, if you have off-duty police officers that are in your congregation, you could ask them if they would help work security. We have churches who do this in Douglasville. And they're not getting paid, it's just because it's their church, they're willing to do it and they provide security when you're having your church services. It's another idea. We also have churches here who don't use police officers necessarily. They just use whoever will volunteer to help them with security. And they will stand outside, the services begin, they close the doors, they stand outside the doors and anybody that comes that they know is not a member, they just confront them. "How you doing? What are you, what's going on? Are you just coming for service?" At least have a conversation before you just let anybody walk in there with a trench coat on and a rifle concealed underneath there. Probably just a little bit of due diligence there might stop some of these things. Book bags, you know, if they, for a lot of churches, you know the vast majority of people go to church with you. So you're not gonna have, and I'm not saying you gotta frisk every single person that comes into church every Sunday. But, a little bit extra security might stop some of these things from happening. So these are just some ideas. This is up to you and it's up to your church, what you can do. I'll get questions about firearms in church. In Georgia, you have to get permission from your church. You get permission from your church, yes, this church will allow firearms. Then you can carry a firearm in there and we have churches here that do that. Not police, not military, just citizen who's hopefully had some training and they got some knowledge about firearms and is proficient with the firearm and they then become security for that church. That is one idea. That's your choice. I say, have an emergency action plan in your church, just like I say to have one in your business, wherever you work. Think about it. Where are, are there places in your church that people could go? There's a large group of people could go, barricade themselves. Are there improvised weapons? What are the exits? How will we get out? Where would we try to re-congregate once this thing is over so we can find out who's missing and who's not? Have a plan. And teach the survival mindset that we're talking about here tonight to everybody that you know and love. It's a hard conversation to have. Some people don't feel like they have the skillset to do it. We showed you a video on there, two teenage girls tackled this man and got him down on the ground. Everybody can do something. Somebody could be the distraction. Somebody can throw the shoes, can be the person that runs, that gets their attention, screams. Whatever the case may be. If you have a plan, everybody can be involved in that and everybody can be part of your survival. But, the idea that we are going to cower down, ask for their forgiveness, try to talk sense into them, rationalize with them, doesn't make any sense. And it doesn't work, it's proved it hasn't worked over and over and over again now for many, many years. And we have, and I put those numbers together, I was conservative. I would say over 2,000 people in America who have been killed or injured in these types of attacks. Cowering doesn't work. You have to fight. Does anybody have some questions? Be happy to answer them if you'll come on up to the... Can we get a runner with a microphone over here to this gentleman in the corner? Police? We can, but we're trying to get it on tape, sir. We want it, we want that voice on tape. You must, might be the best question we get all night.
Yeah, I've had this on with mine for a good while. I go to a small church in Villareca and we got several things we fixed, imposed and probably one of them is gonna be camera. If you're late for church, you go the next week. A 10-minute late thing and you don't get in. That's one thing we're looking at.
Yes, sir.
If you got the door locked, they can't come in.
Sure slows them down. I agree with you there.
Our pastor's a good shot, his son's a good shot. And we had three or four more that have left. We're sort of concerned about actual laws that affect, just do to protect and don't worry about the laws?
Well, the law is on, I mean, the law in Georgia, sir, is if your church leaders say that it's okay to carry a firearm, and I'm assuming that's what you're asking about, you can carry firearms in church. It's legal to do so. So, if that's what you're worried about, then you don't have to worry about it. Certainly, that person who comes in, if you end up shooting at somebody, they have to be a threat to your life. You can't, I mean, you know, don't shoot the person that was 10 minutes late. Shoot the bad guys, only.
Some of the things we do at our church, we lock all the doors at a certain time. We lock it down. So everybody gotta come through one entrance point. Through this one entrance point. We have guys, our security, two guys standing security out there, plus you got security guys on the inside as well. Covered, that's covered by a camera system. 360 degrees camera around the whole campus. Where we have somebody monitoring the parking lots and monitoring the outside while service is going on. Plus, once service start begins, then those guys are standing on the outside, they're standing in the foyer, they're cussing and moving around and everybody... See, everybody gotta have an eye to see. Not just security, everybody's security. So like Stafford was saying, somebody come in, we greet everybody. "How you doing? How you doing this morning? How you doing?" How you doing?" Number one, we got to see what, look in their eyes and see what the mindset is. They come in, they all cross, well, you know, cross-eyed, smelling like whatever, look or what, you want to help them, but you want to pull them to the side. We got a little place, we just pull them to the side. Come on, let's have a conversation. Let's have a conversation.
These people do not want something they didn't expect. That's what we're talking about here tonight. So, if they're expecting a soft target, be able to walk in there and just start shooting people, and they see that the doors get shut, locked, and there's two people standing outside the doors, waiting for somebody to come up, try the doors, now that target looks a little bit more difficult than the next thing down the street. Right? And so, it's just about hardening your targets a little bit and having a little bit of a plan. And maybe they don't stop, maybe they decide not to do it, and they go figure out whatever else they do to spend their time. But they don't like the hard target. Ma'am, you can proceed on up there if you'd like. Go ahead.
First, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For providing this. If our church wanted to do this, will you have somebody come out and talk to the congregation to help us put together a plan? Or would you say we need to have one of these and bring people here to get something? Because not everybody's seen this, and so not everybody's going to know where to start.
We do come out to churches and give this same.
Church or business?
Or business.
Yeah.
The only thing we ask is that you try to get at least fifteen or twenty people there, we don't, you know, come when there's three people standing there. But if you've only got three people at your business, what you can do is if you'll call, you can ask for me, or you ask for Lieutenant Edwards is his name, if you want afterward, I'll write it down for you, but just ask for training, and they'll connect you to somebody here. We could try to put you with another group, if we get another group, let's say another church wants it, but you only have three people in your business, you want them to hear, we'll just have you go to the church group. Does that make sense? We will come out and do these programs. That's what we're doing here, is trying to educate as much of our public as we possibly can. I hope you feel like you learned something tonight, got a little bit of a different perspective than you had when you walked in the door. And that, and we want to come out, that's our job, is to serve and protect you, and sometimes it's got to be just getting some information out to you. We can't be everywhere, but if you have some information, you'll be safer, and there'll be less of these happening, and less people that are hurt or killed when they do happen. I hope they realize people are so pissed off, they don't have the guts to do it anymore. They're like, "I'm not going in there because somebody's going to kick the snot out of me when I go in there."
You could Google that information on security for church or for these things, that's what I did and got some pointers for our church. I got to pull it off, or Google it, or pull it off, then put some information in that document, they have a document there that you could just fill in, fill in the blanks and fill it in with people, and then I put the plan in as I know from being a police officer and all that, implemented that in to that program that they have. And I guess we could pull also, there's some training in North Georgia, I forget where it was, they always have, somebody have some training for churches for this type of active shooter incident. We could look on the web and see if we can find that. But we do come out, and we'll come out and assist you in the way we can, to help.
Again, those videos I showed, DOJ, run, hide, fight video, get that off of YouTube, show that to your family, your congregations, your businesses, and so on, especially if you've got a smaller group of people, show it to them. I mean, that gives them some basic information at least. Does anybody else have a question? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question about our individual rights, not at church, not at work, nothing. Say that one of us is at Walmart in the parking lot, we've just come out, we're getting in our car, or we're in our car, somebody jerks the door open without a gun, jerks the door open, says, "Give me your money, give me your keys, get out of your car, I'm going to," you know, do we have the right to shoot that person if they do not have a gun?
The person has to be a threat, they have to, you have to believe, your perception is key, but also you're going to go in front of a jury, so it really becomes not just your perception, that that's a life-threatening event. They're threatening you with death or great bodily harm. And if that's what you perceive, the person doesn't always have to be armed, okay? They don't. But you're going to have to explain yourself and why you perceive that to be a life-threatening event for you. Death or great bodily harm if you didn't act the way you acted.
Okay. Answered my question.
Yeah, it does.
I'm sorry, what did he say? I didn't.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
I didn't understand, what did he say?
The law says you have a right to protect your life and property at any given moment. But it goes back to what the captain was saying, now, you just can't shoot them because you thought, you got to really be afraid of your life. And you know, I don't mean no harm by it, but you know, if it's somebody y'all reading, snatching your door open, you can't win that fight. It's how you articulate it. If you got, I'm kind of like the captain, I don't want nobody to go back, but the sheriff says shoot him. Sheriff says. Make sure y'all, I'm not saying shoot him, but I'll make sure y'all understand one thing. You got a right to protect your life and property, but you got to put it in perspective. You can't shoot him like he said because he snatched the door open. If you don't think he just want your money in your car, you can make some more money, you can buy another car. Don't lose your life on stuff that you could give up and get it again. But now, when it comes to your life, you ain't got another one of those, so you got a right to defend yourself at any given moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Sheriff said it.
Sheriff said shoot him, I heard.
It wasn't the chief, no.
Does anybody else have any other thing, any question about what we're talking about here tonight?
And think about, one thing the captain was talking about, when you got your young kids going to college or going to school, you didn't have the conversation with them. Because the school program may not be like this program. The school might say, "All right, kids, y'all go hunkering down in the high, right over there, just..." No. Now, I know I got, last time we did this, I made a statement that the kids need to have, get some pistols and stick the guy all in there everywhere they can, but they need to be fighting. Instead of, we don't want to have another, like Columbine up there in New Hampshire.
Sandy Hook.
Sandy Hook. I mean, you know, okay, you might say, "What are you, he talking about training the kids to fight?" I'm talking about training the kids to protect themselves, to survive. It's got to be a new way of thinking. Them fools know what, where they going to be. But guess what? If they start running around, scrambling around, they could change the dynamic, they got to change the atmosphere. Once the atmosphere is changed, then we can save some of our little babies' lives. That's the way I see it, and you know, I know school going to say, "He was over there," yes, I am. I just hate that.
Go ahead, ma'am, what's your question?
Actually, it comes from my son, he's fourteen.
Okay, step up a little closer if you could.
It's from my fourteen-year-old son.
Okay.
He wanted to know if he could text 911 if something happened in school.
Bedric Davidson, you know how that works, I don't want to tell her something, because I'm, you're talking to the not-technical captain.
Texting 911 instead of calling.
Our 911 center does accept text messages.
Then we have a little thing at the school that's with the billboard.
We also have an anonymous text that we get, that's, they can provide tips to us that's anonymous, that will come directly to us, and we can see them and follow up on those tips. There's drugs, there's a kid with a gun in the school, so on and so forth, and we'll follow up on that, and it's anonymous. We don't go back and try to find out who did, I don't think we can, we don't have the ability to find out who it was that sent it, based on the way that it's set up. And we've gotten some tips off of that, and followed up on them, and been good. Go ahead, ma'am.
I have two questions. The first one, the people in church that you designate to carry a weapon, do they need to have a concealed permit?
They have to have a permit, yeah.
Okay. The second one, what do you do in an instance that it's a coworker that's doing the shooting at work and knows your plan?
That's, that's a bad, that's a problem. It certainly is, absolutely is, but the, I mean, the bottom line is, is if you're going and barricading yourself where your plan is to go barricade yourself, and that individual knows, well, that's the room that they're going to go to, definitely it puts you at a disadvantage. But if you have some improvised weapons in there and so on, and they know that you're going to fight if they breach that door and come in there, at least you're giving them a second thought about doing it. And if you know it's them, what I would, I would try to change up the plan a little bit, so that when they came through that door, they wasn't, didn't happen exactly like they thought. All you got to do is do something they don't expect. You've got to do, figure something out you can do that they don't expect, and it slows them down. And it slows them down enough through your action, hopefully you can overcome. There's no way we're going to say, "We'll do this, do that," and we're going to have a hundred percent plan for everything that could ever happen. It just doesn't work that way. But we can do better than what we've been doing by a long shot. Ma'am?
We had kind of a co-question. She's a junior at South Cup High School.
Okay.
And I have her here tonight.
Step a little bit, a little closer.
Okay, hi.
Oh, great, perfect.
She's a junior at South Cup High School, and I brought her here tonight so she can learn on her own, and so she could be well aware of how to handle a situation like that in school.
Yes, ma'am.
For three years now, there's no plans, you know, they're stuck in a room, there's one door in, one door out, there's maybe one officer there. Do you have any idea when they're going to integrate this into schools so students can be prepared together as a team?
I don't, I don't, ma'am. The school, the school system has their own safety plans, and I know from talking into, in the schools in Douglas County and working with them, they have a plan, a lockdown plan for there's an active shooter, and almost all schools in America now have some type of active shooter plan. They're not going to tell you the same things we tell you in here tonight, I can tell you that. But that's something that's going to take some time, of what our perception of what kids should do and what teachers should do, and what their perception is, come together, I suspect. We do look at things a little differently than schoolteachers do and principals and so on. Not that they're any less concerned about your kid's safety, but they're trying to work with their buildings and the structures that they have, and try to best figure out how to protect the greatest number of kids that they can. Our problem is, is once the person makes entry into that room, what are the mindset of the kids and adults, and everybody who's in that room, what's their mindset, and what are they going to do to react? To take some action, and I shouldn't say react, to take some action and stop reacting to what the bad guy's doing. Act! Make him react to you. And give yourself some advantage.
Yeah, I want to say before tonight, she probably would have sat there frozen, but I think tonight has changed a lot, and that's why I would like to see teenagers become aware of this information, so.
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate it, and I agree with you a hundred percent. Anybody else have a question before we wrap up tonight? Here we go.
Sheriff said that you have a right to protect your life and property.
Yes, sir.
I know of at least one person who thinks if somebody was trying to steal his vehicle, he has the right to shoot them.
There's a lot of people, it's not just one, it's a lot of people.
So, now, correct me if I'm wrong, you can only legally shoot someone in order to protect yourself or someone else from great bodily injury or your life.
Or death, that is the way the law is written.
If they're trying, if this lady was asking about jerking your door open and demanding your purse, unless she's in danger of her life or great bodily harm, she does not have the right to shoot someone, is that right?
That's correct. What the sheriff was trying to say is she's going to have to be able to explain herself of why she felt that there was a threat to her person. If it's property that they're after, give them the property. If it's your well-being that they're after, and you feel that they're going to put you in the hospital, do you great bodily harm, or they will kill you if you don't shoot them, then you can shoot them. And when you go and explain yourself, and you have to go in front of a grand jury, so on, then those people, I hope, I have faith in our system, will understand that what you did and why you did it, and that case won't go to trial. It's the same law that police officers are bound to. They have a separate law in Georgia for it, but the wording of it's exactly the same. And that's when we're allowed to use deadly force, is when somebody's threatening to do us great bodily harm or death. That's the only time we're supposed to shoot them. It's no different for citizens and for police officers. People don't realize that, but that's, the law is the same.
Thank you. I'd also like to say, I'm sure I'm glad I came tonight, and I appreciate you folks very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming.
And I am pissed off about all this stuff.
I'm glad to hear it.
And I have a concealed carry permit, but I'm also pissed off that there's a lot of places I can't carry it.
Yeah, well, I understand that, too. I know there's a bunch of people working, working to change that in Georgia, for sure. Folks, we appreciate you coming out, we appreciate that you care enough about your community, care enough to hear what the police department has to say, that you come out on your time, after work, at night, it's cold, nasty out, that means a lot to us. We put these on and nobody's here, that's hard. We put these on and everybody shows up, it's great, it's not often that a police officer stands in front of a crowd of people they don't know and said, "I want you to get more pissed off than you already are."
We just have, just hold one second, please. I should have did this at the, at the front end, and our chaplain, come on, come on up, our chaplain. And I meant to do a moment of silence before, but you know, we don't get a big crowd like this oftentimes when we, when we have these town hall meetings, but like I said before, usually on the, something like this, we do get a big crowd. So, if we would, I would like to have a moment of silence for all the victims out there in Texas, as well as some, all the other places. And then pastor, just say a little word, and then when we get up out of here, I don't want to offend anybody, if you don't want to hear a word, you can get up and leave, but that's what we're going to do. So, we have a moment of silence, please. Okay, pastor. So, Chaplain, Chaplain Hopkins.
Amen. As we close out, it is something that I think they left out, it won't take two seconds, I'm not going to preach, but after the shooting, the church shooting, I don't know if there's any pastors in here, but my insurance company called me, and they're requiring me now to have my people, particularly security, trained in my church, just in case of a church shooting. So, if I know, if you all know your pastor or anything like that, you definitely want to let him know that stuff like this is important. My head of security is in the back, back there, it's definitely important that you all get them involved, because they're very, insurance companies now are very concerned about paying if something happened in the church, so you may want to look into that as well. Let's pray. Lord, we so grateful for you, and we thank you for who you are, and God, in the midst of everything else, we know that it's your protection that we depend on. God, we pray for these officials, we pray for these city leaders, that you will continue to give chief, sheriff, and the police department, and those that work with the community, the wisdom to lead them your way. Then, Lord, we pray for all of these that are here, there's so many people that we understand have lost their lives, and so, God, we just pray for your protection over our schools and our young people, God, all over. Most importantly, God, we just realize and recognize how much we need you. And so, we thank you for this opportunity to come together, we thank you for who you are, and continue to protect your people. I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. God bless y'all, thank y'all. Hey, watch y'all Facebook page, we're going to be having some more training, and I got all y'all information back there, so when we have some training, I'm going to send you a note, I'm going to send you a note, you better come out. All right. Thank you so much, man. Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you, man.